You may notice on the agenda that we may be utilizing Zoom. We have a trustee that's unfortunately in the hospital and she's requested that we accommodate her. So we're not ready to vote on that yet with that open set, I called the meeting to order. Could we have establishment of quorum please?
Trustee Beggs? Trustee Davis? Trustee Garrett? Trustee Hinton is...
Possibly joining us.
Possibly joining. Trustee Nicolau? Vice President Aguilash? Board President Richards?
Here.
And just for the record, student trustee is not present at this moment.
So as I said earlier, trustee Nancy Hinton has made the request to attend the board meeting remotely under the emergency circumstances of AB 2449. She's currently in the hospital and wishes to participate. Do we vote on that now?
So if you'll take, there's a recommended action for item 2.3.
Okay, so the recommended action is... Where is that? The Board of Trustees may take action on this item should a trustee request virtual participation.
Right above.
Right above it? Oh, there you go. That the Board of Trustees approve a trustee's request to participate in the board meeting virtually remotely pursuant to emergency circumstance exemption in AB 2449 based on qualifying information provided by the trustee and/or identify whether a trustee will be participating in the meeting virtually remotely pursuant in the just cause exception. Could I have a motion to approve that? Trustee Nicolau? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Great, so that's approved. Now we're going to invite trustee Hinton in and I have a question to ask her when she's here.
I think he does, yeah. Trustee Hinton, we see that you've been admitted. If you could show your video and audio in order to proceed.
Great. Trustee Hinton, are there any other adults in the room? If so, what's the generate relationship and the nature of those people?
I'm done.
Okay, very good. Then you've been admitted. Okay, now we'll move on to statement 2.4, statement of conflict. I will be recusing myself on item 7.4. I believe there's probably, is there anyone else that has any conflicts? Yeah, because you have a thing coming up.
I don't know.
Okay.
Just let me know.
Okay, at this time we'll move to 2.5. Do we have any public comments regarding any of the closed session items?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Then I believe we are ready to adjourn to closed session, but Madam Sonographer, if you could tell us what we're going to talk about, that would be great.
I'll give you the brief version. The board will adjourn to closed session to discuss items 3.1 through 3.5 listed in the October 9th regular meeting closed session agenda.
Outstanding. With that, we're adjourned to closed session. We'll see you later.
For work? Were you in the meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, I think it's out of your brain here. So I gave... I'm gonna have to break.
...
To call to order this 758th, 15th regular meeting of the Yosemite Community College District Board of Trustees on Wednesday, August 9, 2024. At 5:30, that clock is wrong, it's slow. Trustee Garrett, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please rise. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and
Madam Synographer, could we have the roll call, please?
If you give me a moment, let me just see if there's anyone in the waiting room. It doesn't appear to be. Student trustee Castrojon.
Present.
Trustee Beggs.
Here.
Trustee Davis.
Present.
Trustee Garrett.
Present.
Trustee Nicolau.
Present.
Vice President Aguilar.
Present.
And Board President Richards.
I'm here, thank you. We do have a report out of closed session. The Board of Trustees voted unanimously to approve an educational administrator's request to rescind their resignation. Trustee Davis made a motion to approve and trustee Hinton seconded. It was passed unanimously. As far as statements of conflict, I will be stepping away for item 7.4. And I believe we have a couple other trustees that have a few things to step by there.
Eight minus seven point six?
Seven points.
Eight point five for trustee Aguilar. And then if trustee Hinton does appear via Zoom, then she would recuse herself on eight point four, my understanding.
Do I have any requests for changes in the order of business? Seeing none. Moving on to public comments, I do have one card so far. Supervisor Brandon?
Well, that's a lot of pressure.
Gosh, Jeff, you didn't have the card.
Right. Please, go ahead. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate being able to come to your district board meeting here and time as well. So I represent Jamestown and Columbia. I'm entering my second term as a county supervisor representative. Beautiful community, born and raised here. Didn't end up going to Columbia College, which I kicked myself for. Went straight to UC and I still have all of the college debt deferred to prove that I did that decision. So I just wanted to come speak as a community representative who on my plate is just about every issue somebody wants to shake a stick at. Everything from a tree branch down to why aren't there enough jobs, to the roads, to the fire service. County supervisor is a generalist position. We oversee a $300 million budget, 700 employees in our community. And as I think everybody in here knows, we have a huge and diverse array of things that we want to do and also things that we have to do every single year. And so we're always trying to figure that out. I wanted to say thank you to the district, particularly to Columbia College and Dr. Tran. I wanted to highlight that since I started this office in 2021, I've always found YCCD and Columbia College to be a very active partner, but increasingly so more recently. When I went to, you know, elementary school, high school here, Columbia College was known for not having a very high transfer rate. Columbia College was known for being an accumulation of a few degrees type area, professional student type thing. What I have seen over my short period of working on this has been a partner from the greater forestry core to looking at technology partnerships, to trying to train state wildland firefighters, to approaching student housing with new investments, and that the county in reaching out about economic development and community problems has really had a partner that I appreciate. I think Columbia College in particular is really the academic engine for the seven counties up to the east up here in the mountains. It's a huge generator. It has a huge and profound impact and I see that it's been addressing, I could just keep going, I mean, healthcare in the K through 16 and Sierra Business Council at every point Columbia's been at the table and supporting that. So I want to say thank you. I know that takes time and effort, but the communication, the collaboration is much appreciated from the county side.
Thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you.
Professor Manlove?
Yeah, mine's a little briefer. I just wanted to say thank you guys for keeping parking free on this campus. It has made a huge difference in our students' lives. It is a really big deal to them to not get parking tickets. It is a really, really big deal for them to be able to come openly to our campus and not have to worry about which vehicle they've taken that morning or whether or not they've got a sticker. It's really, really appreciated by the students. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. I do want to say hello to former trustee Balkans, always nice to have you here. Is there anyone else wishing to speak that didn't turn in the card? Okay, very good. We'll move on to the board committee reports. Starting off with chairman Garrett from the board finance committee.
Very sad to report that we did not have a board finance committee meeting this month, but you'll all be happy to know that next month on Monday, November 4, we will be having a board finance committee meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Modesto Junior College Foundation Report. I understand trustee Beggs, you have something else?
Yes, Emily gave me an update. She wanted us to know that 204 students have begun the scholarship application process and the deadline for closing the application process this year is December 20.
The hospitality program has really been doing fantastic. It's packed, it's great to see the folks back there. But we're really going to focus tonight on the FIRE, EMS and health education programs. And I'm not sure I'm needed up here because supervisor Brandon, I think, already did most of what I was going to talk about, about how excited we are about our partnerships with our community and how they're really thriving. And so, so these programs, not to steal from Shane and Emily too much, but our, our FIRE program has a long history of being really successful. It's full, it's a, it's a model. When the folks from the statewide Fire Coordination Agency come up, they, they tell me, your, your program is a model for the state. And so we're, we're so proud of them. But then the recent additions with Wildland Fire and how much demand there is for that, we're really excited about too. EMS has really been full, we've been adding classes. And then one thing I want to make sure to do is really thank MJC because two years ago, healthcare, we had EMS, but now in healthcare, we have EMS, we have patient access, we have phlebotomy, we have medical assisting, we have CNA. And it's really making a difference in our community where we have shortages in those areas. So without further ado, I'm going to let the experts in these areas talk. So Shane Warner from the FIRE program.
And I will. Thank you, Dean Price. I had brought a few guests with us too, so I'd like to just have them filter in. These are four of our students out of our FIRE Academy that just came to, in support of what we're doing tonight.
Please introduce them all.
Can you guys come up and introduce yourself?
Hello, board. My name is Ethan Rowe. I am one of the squad leaders with Columbia College Fire Academy.
Good afternoon. My name is Ross Rush, Jr., and I'm a squad leader as well.
Hello, board. I'm Tyler Wright. I'm the crew leader for the Columbia College Fire Academy. Really excited to be here. Thank you guys for having us.
Hello, board. My name is Charlie Kelgard. I'm Squad Four Leader and I'm very excited to be here. Thank you, guys.
So I'd like to say thank you for inviting us to do a presentation about our program. I think we did one last year down in Modesto. I'd like to start with our, our first slide that we have is basically, before we get into that slide, just like to introduce myself. My name's Shane Warner, this is Andy Van Hoogmood. I'm kind of referring back to where I've been, what I've done. I've been here 12 years. Prior to that, I was a fire chief and in the fire service for over 30 years. This, I'm also an alumni member of Columbia. I graduated here in 1991. So one of my goals in my career was to come back here and do just what I'm doing today. So I'm very happy to be here. The slide that you see up here on the, on the screen is basically a slide that's showing that we have a certificate of achievement. We have a fire technology AS degree, a fire science AS degree. And we also recently just added a Wildland Certificate of Achievements, which goes back to what we were talking about here and just at the beginning of this meeting. And we're currently working on classes to provide, excuse me, a Wildland AS degree as well. This, this current FIRE Academy started in the fall semester with 40 students and we have a staff firehouse here on campus. And we have basically, we are one of two colleges in the state that have FIRE departments on the campus, as stated in the slide. So if I can get the next slide, please. So one of the things that we've done, and you probably have heard this time and time again, but accreditation. Accreditation in our world, in the fire service means that we are accredited through the state that gives us IFSAAC and Pro Board Certification. And that enables a student upon taking quite a few different state tests, to be able to take this firefighter one or firefighter two curriculum, get the certification and be able to go outside of California for employment if necessary. Okay, and if I can get the next slide, please? I don't want to take up time. I know we're on a time schedule and I tend to take a lot of time doing all this stuff.
Don't feel rushed, you can go ahead.
Okay, and also on this slide here, we're indicating that we have C cap classes. And this is another thing that we've done to improve our, our program is we have a, a current program FIRE One, which is Introduction to Fire Technology and EMR at the Oakdale High School and also in Snora. So these are very good feeder programs pathways from the high schools to Columbia College. And also, these are, we are also introducing the apprenticeship programs for FIRE and EMS. Also, in this picture is also indicating the forestry core that we've developed through Motherlode Job Training and our partners out there. And we're, that's one of the reasons why we're going to develop our own Wildland Fire program. So this certification is a kind of a, the FIRE Academy list here is what the students will receive upon completion of the academy. And it has basically the FIRE 101A through D. It has the Health and Human Performance Class, EMR, and all the state certifications. Post-academy, when we talk about internships, when we talk about volunteer reserve positions, these are internships and positions and seasonal employment that has to take place because there's a task book that's associated with a firefighter one and firefighter two certification that has to be completed before they receive those certifications. Our agency partners. Long list, but we couldn't do it without these people and these departments. There's a lot of different departments up there from in the area, out of the area. And I just want to give them recognition because we wouldn't be able to do what we do every day with the FIRE Academy of 40 students. And we have to go visit some of these areas to make the, either the classes happen or have larger areas for training. Career Day is a fun day we do at Snore City. This is a great opportunity for local agencies to come in, evaluate our students. We put them through a physical agility, they climb the ladder truck. They do several different things with, Jen Fraser goes over basically cover letter, resume writing class. And they also have oral interview classes that they, they take as well as a mock interview. And this is our group for Fall 2024. The thing that I want to indicate is that this is a full class. The engine you see behind the, the academy was donated recently by Mariposa County Fire Department. So I just wanted to give them a good plug in the picture of them with a, with a fire engine that's being used. And Michael Keegan couldn't be here, but I used to teach in the EMS class. So basically I would like to just talk a little bit about that. One of the key things that Michael wanted me to mention, Michael Keegan is the program coordinator and he has taken this EMS class to a higher level. One of the things that he's done is he's reaching out to Snora High School. He's teaching a FIRE One class and EMR class down there at Snora. We have another class going on in Calaveras County. One of the other things he wanted me to mention was that he is currently buying new equipment to upgrade the equipment that we needed for basically for student success. And then also he wanted to mention that in a lot of the, what they're doing in these classes is basically, he wants to continue buying new equipment. He wants to continue to backfill the EMR program and EMT classes. One of our prerequisites for the academy is to have your EMR license. So this kind of feeds, one feeds the other. So we have to keep this program strong. So keep supporting the EMR program. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane. That was terrific. Now I'm going to introduce Emily Graham, who is our director of, boy, I'm going to get your title wrong, Emily. Director of Career Programs, but really today she's here to talk about the healthcare programs and the expansion of healthcare programs here on campus. So Emily.
Thank you very much and thank you for the invitation and the, and the honor to be here today. I also have a student who recently completed the phlebotomy program and is now a student in the medical assisting program. She can introduce herself.
Hello, everyone. My name's Leandra. I'm a second year student here. I'm an allied health major as well as an emergency medical service major.
Okay. Thank you, Leandra. So our healthcare programs have grown quite a bit in the last year, year and a half. So we have a certified nursing assistant program now at the college. Columbia started its own and launched that this fall after collaborating with MJC last spring. We also have a medical assisting program now. We have, that started this fall, a patient access rep that is on to its third cohort. And next slide. Phlebotomy program that started in the spring, we have another one this fall and we're going to hopefully start another one that'll be a Saturday course to help more people who are working parents to access that service and get that training. We are also offering, of course, our public health associate's degree for transfer. And that program is going to be revamped to meet state requirements. We also, and actually in the spring, it's going to be full completely with 15 students at Snora High School for the CNA cohort there. That is a C cap course. And I want to thank MJC for collaborating with us on all levels to, with advice, with service, with faculty that they've loaned us and helped us to grow. Coming soon, we're going to have the Home Health Aid Program, which is a continuing education credit for those CNAs. Thank you very much.
So, so thank you very much. And in closing, I just.
Brandon, one second. Trustee Nicolau has a question.
Oh, question, sorry.
I just wanted to say this is not my world, but I really appreciated the update. I love that we have students here. You guys did a great job and I'm feeling really good over here. It's, the meeting's off to a great start. Thank you for adding to that. You guys are doing great things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kind of used to him from Stanislaus. This is.
Yeah, we go back.
He does, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're pretty excited about these programs too and the expansion. And one of the things I just wanted to highlight was, I know it's a lot of extra effort, but the, the, the relationships that we've formed with the community, you notice like all these programs have C caps involved and we're reaching into the high schools to do those. And I think we have almost 30 C cap classes now and continuing to grow and we're really proud of that. And I think what supervisor Brandon was talking about early on is something that we're, we're really intentional about is reaching out to that community and working with Motherlode Job Training in the high schools and our community partners. And so, yeah, we're having a great time doing it. So thank you.
Brandon, I do have a question for the chief. How do you work? I have a particular interest in the Modesto FIRE Academy, which I believe we finally turned around and we've got a good relationship with Modesto FIRE and things are going well. Are you guys completely separate or do you work together? Or, you know, I've, I've heard that you guys do a little bit more with CAL FIRE. How is the relationship with MJC and the FIRE Academy?
Different than MJC's program? Is that what you're asking? So what?
Do you all work together? Is it totally different? Is it competitive? I'm just curious.
We, as far as our program goes, we, we have a CAL FIRE engine that's up there at our station currently. And then also it's staffed up there, the breathing support that's up there is staffed with student workers that we employ from YCCD as student workers. So that helps them get the on-the-job training, gets that task book signed off. As, at the same time, they're being governed and watched over by the CAL FIRE people.
Are your firefighters trained to be municipal firefighters? Or are they, are they more CAL FIRE people?
To answer that question, that's a very good question to answer that, we are all risk. The academy provides that, that training for that person that's a student to be able to go to any fire department up and down the state of California. On the Wildland side of the house that we're trying to build, that's going to be aimed more towards the Forest Service and CAL FIRE employment for those seasonal positions.
And I noticed on your list that Modesto FIRE wasn't listed. Is that because of the geographic area and that you don't?
It's just a competitor. I mean, that, just, I'm joking. I'm joking. I, with Brian in the room, I just wanted to say a little joke. But no, we have no, we have a good working relationship with, with Captain Curless at the, at the Regional Fire Training Center.
Thank you. Is there, board, any question, other questions? Members of the public, any questions? Thank you so much. That was very insightful. Have a great day.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to 6.2, trustee Beggs, who's a kind of a staple at this place, had some questions about some graduation and persistent rates and everything. And I'm really pleased since Lucas has come in and, and Emily, we, we've got some information, so come forward.
It's nice to see you all again.
I'm Samantha, Senior Director of Institutional Research, Planning and Accreditation with Central Services. Our presentation's kind of broken up into a few different parts and formats. So Pat and Jose are going to talk about support programs at MJC. I'm going to come back up and talk about support programs at Columbia. And then we'll go over a Power BI report that extends that scope a little bit.
I'm Caterina Grassi. I'm the Director of College Research and Planning at MJC. And then here's my co-presenter.
Good afternoon, Jose Rocha, Dean of Special Programs.
So MJC has over 20 support programs that range from foster youth to economically disadvantaged, from STEM students to first generation students, from single parents to a variety of different racial and ethnicity based affinity groups. However, because many of these programs have been recently established, are still defining their eligibility requirements and what services they offer and/or are nested under another program, we decided to focus on four main support programs that have existed for the entire duration of the timeline requested. And those are the Accommodations and Support Center, or ASC, formerly known as DSPS, EOPS, Trio Student Success Support Services, and then Umoja. We are going to be examining the impact of the program, the, the impact the program has on a student's course retention, course success, fall to spring retention and fall to fall, fall to fall persistence. And this is going to be done by comparing the rates of students who are enrolled in one of these support programs to one, students who are eligible for the program but not enrolled, and then students who are not eligible for the program and also not enrolled in any of the programs. And with that, we'll have Jose start. Oh, wait, sorry, I lied. Before we dive into the metrics, we want to direct your attention to MJC's Disproportionate Impact Dashboard. This dashboard has all of the demographic information related to MJC specifically for special programs as well. If you look at the highlighted tab and then the highlighted filter over on the right, you can see that that gives a special population filter. So you can filter not only by the four programs we're looking at today, but a bunch of other special populations as well, including Pell recipients, student athletes and the like. Demographic information on this dashboard. Moving on to 6.2, trustee Beggs, who's a kind of a staple at this place, had some questions about some graduation and persistent rates and everything. And I'm really pleased since Lucas has come in and, and Emily, we've got some information, so come forward.
Nice to see you all again. I'm Samantha, Senior Director of Institutional Research, Planning and Accreditation with Central Services. Our presentation's kind of broken up into a few different parts and formats. So Pat and Jose are going to talk about support programs at MJC. I'm going to come back up and talk about support programs at Columbia. And then we'll go over a Power BI report that extends that scope a little bit.
Hi, I'm Caterina Grassi. I'm the Director of College Research and Planning at MJC. And then here's my co-presenter.
Good afternoon. Jose Rocha, Dino Special Programs.
Okay, so MJC has over 20 support programs that range from foster youth to economically disadvantaged, from STEM students to first generation students, from single parents to a variety of different racial and ethnicity-based affinity groups. However, because many of these programs have been recently established, are still defining their eligibility requirements and what services they offer and/or are nested under another program, we decided to focus on four main support programs that have existed for the entire duration of the timeline requested. And those are the Accommodations and Support Center, or ASC, formerly known as DSPS, EOPS, Trio Student Success Support Services, and then Umoja. We are going to be examining the impact of the program, the impact the program has on a student's course retention, course success, fall to spring retention, and fall to fall persistence. And this is going to be done by comparing the rates of students who are enrolled in one of these support programs to, one, students who are eligible for the program but not enrolled, and then students who are not eligible for the program and also not enrolled in any of the programs. And with that, we'll have Jose start. Oh, wait, sorry, I lied. Before we dive into the metrics, we want to direct your attention to MJC's disproportionate impact dashboard. This dashboard has all of the demographic information related to MJC, specifically for special programs as well. If you look at the highlighted tab and then the highlighted filter over on the right, you can see that that gives a special population filter. So you can filter not only by the four programs we're looking at today, but a bunch of other special populations as well, including Pell recipients, student athletes, and the like. Demographic information on this dashboard includes gender, age, ethnicity, average cumulative units, average GPA, and academic program enrollment from academic year 2018, 2019, all the way through to 23, 24. And it is updated annually. The link can, this dashboard can be accessed via the College Research and Planning website, which is at the bottom of the screen. And it can also be accessed via the link that is in the written report that you guys also received. Now, Jose, take it away.
All right. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that we do at the ASC. So as Kat mentioned, we changed our name from DSPS to ASC about three years ago to be more inclusive with our students. And so basically what they do is they accommodate students in the classroom and support them where they need homework assistance, extended time to take a test, or any additional note-taking or stuff like that. So we have the resources that we offer, also counseling that we support our students on a semester basis to enroll them, to get them what they need as part of moving forward in their curriculum.
Yeah. And then if we look at the graph that's on the screen, you can see that our ASC student program enrollment decreased in 2020, 2021, which makes sense because of COVID. And then it has remained stable since then with a ever-so-slight uptick. Now, we're going to take a look at the retention success and persistence rates of the Accommodation Support Center to see how the program is impacted. Here on the screen, we have the blue bars, which will represent ASC students, and the gray bars, which will, which will represent students that are not part of any support program and also not eligible for ASC. This graph, ASC does not have an eligible bar only because it's difficult to identify students that have a verified disability that aren't a part of ASC because you have to go to ASC to have a verified disability. So for this program, we're just comparing the not a part of and part of. First, we're going to look at retention. Retention rates are the percent of students that received an A, B, C, D, F, incompletes, basically no Ws or EWs. And here, as you can see, we have remained pretty even or slightly above over the past six academic years in terms of retention, hovering around 80 something-ish percent. When we go to success rates, once again, the gray bar is not, not part of, and blue is part of. Success rates are students who received an A, B, C pass or an incomplete IA, I mean, A, B, C or pass. And here you can see that the success rates for the ASC students are slightly below what are not a part of any support program population receives for success rates. When we go to fall to spring persistence, we can see that there is a good jump between the not a part of any support program and the students that are a part of ASC. Fall to spring persistence is students who were enrolled and stayed in fall semester and then have been enrolled in the subsequent spring semester. So it's great news knowing that students that start in fall then register for classes and go and take their classes in spring as well. Fall to fall persistence is looking at fall students who enrolled in fall, and then they also enrolled a year later, once again, in the fall semester. And as you can see with the ASC students, again, comparing to not part of any support program, those numbers are definitely higher than what our not support program population looks like.
All right. So the EOPS program, actually, we just celebrated our 55th year being in existence in the state of California. And what they do is basically they support some of our low-income students, first-generation students, students that have no more than 70 units in the course. They provide grants as far as like book vouchers. They have to go to counseling three times a semester. It's really intensive work, wraparound services they provide. And one of the newest programs is our next-up program, which is our Foster Youth, which we're creating a space for, for our students. So one of the things we have is actually a partnership with Stan State to give you an idea because that group is so volatile and facing possibly homelessness that we are housing a couple of fewer students there. So kind of create that, that whole college environment. And so the, the group, what they do is they, they support them in any way possible. They do also application workshops to get them through. And as Kat mentioned in the previous slide, our numbers dipped in 2001, obviously because of COVID. But the group is working hard to, to bring up our numbers. On the 55th birthday, they actually had hot dogs, for example, on the quad and gave them out to students for free. But part of that was also as an outreach initiative to not only feed them, but also to let them know that there's a program here to support them. And so we're just creating these different ways, different venues to, to support them in any way possible.
Okay. Now we have some yellow bars too. So the blue bars represent EOPS students. The yellow bars represent students that are eligible for EOPS but are not currently in the support program. And then the gray bars represent students that are not eligible for EOPS and are not also, and are also not a part of any of the four programs that we're looking at. And so as you can see for retention, which is everything but a W, you can see that our EOPS students are slightly above our EOPS eligible students for retention and are about even with our not part of any support program population across the whole six years, which is great news. When we look at success, we can see that the EOPS students are, for the most part, either even or above our EOPS eligible students, which suggests that there is some impact there for success for EOPS students compared to the students that would be receiving the services but have not received the services. When we go to fall to spring persistence, that, that jump gets even bigger. We can see that our EOPS students are persisting at a much higher rate than our EOPS eligible students, as well as our students that are not part of any support program. When we look at fall to fall persistence rates, we can see the same trend where our EOPS students are persisting at a much higher rate than the other populations.
All right. Our Trio SSS program is a federal program, and we've had it at MJC's, I want to say since the 90s. It's been around for a long time. And I'm actually a Trio alum myself at UC Berkeley as a, as a high school student. So they have three different programs. So basically it's the high school component, which is the upper bound ETS, Education Town Search, our student support services program, which is our college base. And then there's the McNair program for students that want to go to graduate school. So the program that we have is here is the transfer-based program. You have to be first come, excuse me, low, low-income, first-generation student and a student with a disability as, as part of a percentage of the group. And they do, similar to EOPS, they do a wraparound services. They provide workshops, they provide financial assistance and literacy. They go out to colleges. So recently they went to Sac State, for example, to go get that exposure, that opportunity for students. And they, they, they do the transfer advising, so it's a transfer-based program. And so they do a lot of the personal aspects. And so we actually are funded to do 258 students every year. And so the number, although it's low right here on 23, 24, but that was because I was captured at that moment. So we've been working on getting that up. So now we're actually close to that 258 number. So, so we're good. This year's actually our last year for this program. We submitted our application for refunding. And actually, we submitted two because it's been very successful, and we want to duplicate the resources and services to making sure we're creating a bigger impact for our students.
And Jose's comment about how successful Trio has been can be seen in these graphs as well. Once again, Trio is the blue bar, Trio eligible students, but students that are not, not in Trio actively is the yellow bar. And then students that are not part of any program and also not eligible for any of the programs are the gray bar. As you can see for retention, we, our Trio SSS students are about even with our not part of any support program group, which means that it is doing its job, which is fantastic. When we look at course success rates, it is a very similar trend to retention where, for the most part, our Trio students are on par with our students that are not receiving any, that are not part of any support program. When we go to fall to spring persistence, we can see, once again, like in the other programs, that there is a jump in persistence rates for fall to spring where our Trio students have a larger, are persisting at larger rates from the fall semester to the spring semester. And the same can be seen for the fall to fall semester where students are persisting, our Trio students are persisting at a much higher rate than the eligible Trio students, as well as the not a part of any support program students.
All right. And finally, our EMOJA program. Our EMOJA program is one of our cultural programs, intended and designed for our African-American diaspora type of curriculum and type of work. But it's not just dedicated for African-Americans. It's actually, it's open to, to anyone. And similar to those programs, it's a transfer-based to helping out students. There's actually a lot of work with the HBCUs. So this past spring, students, actually about 10 of them went out to, to the South, went out to Georgia, Alabama, and some other places to kind of just see the different HBCUs that are offered. There's a counseling aspect, there's a workshops aspect, there's a place to create community aspects that's part of it. And there's that family environment that the EMOJA creates for our students. And they do a lot of great work. So similar to the other programs, dip in 2021, an increase. And we're actually looking at how could we actually outreach to more students and making sure that we're creating that, that bigger impact to our groups.
Yeah. One thing that's awesome about EMOJA that we haven't seen in the other programs is that in 2023, they are so close to being back at their 2019, 2020 numbers, which means that they jumped right back real quick, which is what, which is kind of a good sign that it's a great program if students want to be there that bad. When we look at the success metrics of retention success and persistence for EMOJA, we can see that our students in EMOJA are consistently higher in the retention rates than the EMOJA eligible students. One thing that's important to note about EMOJA eligible students is that it is a target population. Technically, anybody can be accepted into EMOJA. But we are, EMOJA specifically targets African-American students. So that is the comparison there. When we go to success rates, we can see that, for the most part, EMOJA students are either succeeding at a higher rate than our EMOJA eligible students or are even with our EMOJA eligible students. When we look at fall to spring persistence rates, before we go to that, actually, I want to point out that there is a blue bar missing in 23, 24. There could be, there is a number of potential reasons why that might be missing. I have a feeling it might be due to some reporting issues, and so we're wanting to get that cleaned up. And then there will be a bar there eventually. We did have students in fall '23, I promise. So if, but when we look at the graph, we can see that the fall to spring persistence rates for EMOJA students has been a good jump higher than the rest of our population that we're, that we are looking at in this graph. And it can be inferred that 23, 24 would look similar to those previous bars as well. When we look at fall to fall persistence rates, there's once again a similar trend with the exception of 21, 22, which is coming right out of that pandemic. So it's not shocking to see that number be lower. But for the most part, we are much higher than our target population and much higher than are not a part of any population. So our programs are doing their jobs, which is fantastic. This is MJC's last slide, but I did want to bring up just a couple of discussion items real quick. Overall, these results suggest that ASC, EOPS, Trio, and EMOJA have an impact on course retention and success in that these metrics are closer even with retention and success for the students who are not part of or eligible for the programs. There's also been a significant positive impact for fall to spring and fall to fall persistence rates for students that are in these programs, surpassing the other two groups consistently across academic years for all four of the programs. And one thing that is important to note, as I'm sure Jose could tell you too, is that these programs are designed specifically to promote persistence and promote retention. And so seeing the high numbers of persistence rates and seeing the good numbers in retention, that means that these programs are on the right track and doing what they're supposed to do, which is awesome for our students and awesome for MJC overall. And then I think Sam's next.
Before you-
Yeah, I was going to open it up for questions from trustees before you move on, so please.
Thank you for, for the data. And I agree that it suggests that those who are receiving support are, are succeeding at higher levels. What, what if any, which you suppose are barriers to the Trio eligible and versus the, the ones who are participating? And you know, what, what do you think are the reasons why I'm eligible, but I, I'm not accessing the services?
It could be a number of things. So part of the, for example, EOPS, students are required to attend counseling three times a semester. Some students may or may not want that as well. Also, the amount of units that they have to take. So EOPS caps it at 70 units, so it might be some students above that that might not qualify. But, but one of the biggest things that we do actually is the outreach component. And so like activities and events that I've shared earlier are part of that to create that, that opportunity. And one that we have actually made it easier for students to get into the programs. So like, again, for EOPS, they, we use the eTreat process where they just submit their names, their W numbers, and writing it there, they know if they're eligible or not because it's tied into their financial aid. So we're not trying to create barriers, we're trying to remove them and helping them out. But you know, it just all depends on students who want to create that commitment to being part of the program as well.
I understand. And just a little follow-up. Because the, the percentages are the percentage of, of those who are eligible and participating and eligible and not participate, right? But those could be small numbers. You know, if, if those who are eligible aren't accessing, but we don't know from this data if that's the case. Or would you say it's the majority of students who are eligible are taking advantage and seeking out those services? Or did I miss that slide?
Yeah. So if, for example, let's take Trio. Let me go back. There we go. So, so one thing with Trio is that it is an application process. So they can accept a maximum of 258 students. So all of the students that are in that yellow bar are not those 258. And so that's why there is a, that, that would be the main barrier for Trio.
Away?
Because the program can-
Do we turn students away?
For Trio?
Any of these programs?
For Trio, I believe we have to.
Yeah, they have to meet the requirements.
No, but I'm saying, are there people that meet the requirements that want to be in the program that we don't accept?
We haven't yet. So.
But for example, with Trio, the eligibility requirements are first generation and low income. So the number there is much, much, much larger than 258. It's in the thousands. And so the number there isn't a smaller number in eligibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have one. So, and I've served on the SSS Trio Advisory Committee in the past. My question is, these programs have certain practices that help students persist. Do we, as a college, look at those and say, okay, this works? Do we adopt it for our other students? Can we, do we think that way of, oh, here's something that helps this other group that's not maybe doing as well because they don't qualify or they didn't decide to enroll? Do we, do we look at what works that maybe doesn't cost a lot of money and try to adopt those practices?
Yeah, yes. Although you, you hit the key point there, which is that don't cost a lot of money. Because the nature of these programs is that they're a very large investment in a group of students. We hire a special programs dean, staff members to support the dean, faculty counselors to, to support a small group of students. And the investment per student in these is, is quite a bit higher. I'm encouraged seeing the persistence rate fall to spring and fall to fall because to me, that's evidence that the students in the program feel connected to the humans, to the people in our, on our team that are helping to lead those things forward. The nature of our Guided Pathways work has really been to focus on what kinds of practices can we take to scale? What kinds of communications are happening with a smaller group that we can replicate? Even this week, Lucas and I were exchanging about text messaging between students and their instructional faculty in ways that can be taken to scale to build those kinds of connections to the faculty members we're paying to teach in those programs already and to run the instructional programs. And as we're, right now, we have support programs in here, specifics, faculty members who serve as counselors and coordinators in these programs. Does that make sense? They are the most expensive procedures. And one of the problems with EOPS success numbers is that they are so fantastic. And we love to do EOPS for all 20,000 students at MJC. But to your question, we couldn't, couldn't afford to do all of those services to all 20,000 students. So we, we are seeking the ones that are scalable though.
That being said too, though, there are smaller individual level things that employees at MJC can do to promote these things. One of the major themes in all of these programs is that they promote a sense of belonging, a sense of community. And so doing those things in your classroom, doing those things out in the student services departments of like connecting with your students, making sure your students have those things, that does help produce these types of things on a smaller scale, but it does help. And it's not the amount of funding that we need for Trio. And it's things like that that I think we can more consistently apply, and that would help boost those persistence and retention rates as well.
Any other questions from the board? Any members of the public with any comments or questions? Okay, we're ready for the next person.
Happy Wednesday. Okay, two comments before I get started. One, this is my first time presenting at Columbia, and for some reason, this screen is further than I remember it being. So if you see me squinting, I'm not glaring. And second of all, I just really need to express my appreciation for the Modesto Research Office and Columbia for just continuously helping me learn about the data environment. for just continuously helping me, uh, learn about the data environment, finding all the things I need and just really appreciative of that. Um, so we're gonna go over DSPS, EOPS and Trio. Um, first, the number of students per program per year. Uh, I pointed this out in my last presentation and I will probably for the foreseeable future, that twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, um, because of COVID, introduced some like really interesting looking graphs. This one, you can see a pretty big decrease from nineteen twenty, twenty twenty, twenty one. Uh, we don't know, but it's pretty safe to assume. I bet my money on it being COVID. Um, that being said, Trio, interestingly, has been pretty consistent, even given a global pandemic. Uh, didn't, had this decrease, but nothing like you see in EOPS and DSPS. Um, they did a fantastic job about talking about services and eligibility of each of these, so I'm not going to go into all of them in detail. Um, but as mentioned, the eligibility, eligibility for EOPS is California resident, AB five forty student or Dream Act student, or as Jose mentioned, uh, no more than seventy associate, uh, level units. And also an educational disadvantage. I wanted to note that one because when I first saw that, I didn't know what it meant. Uh, and there's a lot of different categories of what counts as an edu-, um, educational disadvantage. So that could be a first gen student, a member of impacted community, uh, GPA below two point five, enrolled in remedial education, didn't graduate from high school or get a GED, current form or foster youth, um, primary language spoken at home is or was not English or eligible for basic skills math, uh, or basic skills English. And again, a lot of services offered, but, uh, priority registration, um, book vouchers, things like that. So getting into the super fun graphs now, you can see that, uh, college wide is our yellow line and EOPS is the red one. So we started, and you'll see this for both EOPS and DSPS, that college wide at the beginning, eighteen nineteen is quite a bit higher, in this case about four percent higher, but has a pretty steep increase between nineteen twenty to twenty three, twenty four, and now kind of leveling out to this, uh, most recent, recent academic year to where they're about the same rates. Here's the success rate for EOPS, and it has a similar trend where at the beginning here, you see it's nearly eight percent higher, the college wide versus EOPS. But then again, a pretty steep increase into the last two academic years. And here's kind of doing the opposite where if the last two, where we had retention and, um, success, college wide was higher. Here, EOPS has been consistently higher and widening that gap in terms of, uh, improving their persistence rates among EOPS students. Next one is Trio. These are my favorite ones to look at. I'm just giving you a heads up now because all three of those rates are consistently higher. So the program Trio is just really, uh, really helping out our students. So eighteen nineteen, again, you can see Trio starting above the college, uh, college wide rate and continues to increase at a higher pace than college wide. The eligibility here too is just accepted to Columbia College, first gen, uh, low income or verified disability. And also needs to commit to graduating from Columbia within four years and transferring to a university for a bachelor's degree. We will look at the success rate. We see again, um, that it's pretty significantly higher, ten percent higher, both from twenty eighteen all the way through our most recent year. Also, just like a fun thing to point out, that's kind of rare to see in line graphs that, just to bring a little fun to the meeting. It's almost mirrored. So it's, it's kind of fun when you see something, uh, a rate decreasing at the same, uh, sense that another one is increasing, if anyone. It's a data nerd. It's a fun thing to see. It doesn't happen that much. Um, persistent rates, again, we see Trio just really helping our students out. So ten percent higher to begin with, and that gap is a little bit smaller now, about eight percent. But nonetheless, um, you can just tell across all three of these metrics, Trio is really supporting, uh, student success. The last one we'll look at is DSPS. Um, these ones are a little bit more interesting because you can see, uh, is about a three percent difference at the beginning. But for about two years, almost three years, they're right on track with each other in terms of retention rate for DSPS, DSPS students and college wide. Their rate stays the same. And then we see this just decrease in twenty two, twenty three to twenty three, twenty four. Um, I am new here, but it makes me wonder if there was a policy change, if there's a change in services, if more services were offered, fewer, that kind of thing. That's where I would want to explore next with these retention rates. Uh, we see a similar pattern here where there is about a six percent difference at the beginning. And then for about two years, again, they're right, right in line with each other. And then we see this decrease around the same time, which again, uh, might be somewhere to investigate a little bit further and thinking about how services might have changed or what policies might have changed. Persistent rate here looks similar to EOPS in that we started with, uh, you know, our, our retention and success here is kind of flip flopped. So instead of college wide being higher here, we can see DSPS persistence rates are actually higher than the college wide rates. Um, and these are, uh, two term persistence, so fall to fall. Okay, now we get to move on to Power BI reports. Yay, that's when you get excited.
Before you move on, any questions from the public about anything that's been discussed to date? Any board questions? Please continue.
Okay, so as a reminder, the original quest that I got from trustee Biggs was looking at these rates um, through various lenses. So obviously special programs was one of those. Um, we looked into that, uh, pretty closely and I'm happy about that. And the other ones we were talking about were credit load, academic program, um, and different demographic details. So the Power BI is a mix of kind of all of these things. Thank you, guys. And I did the same as last time where we have a video. So if you have a question, please pause it for me, or I'll just talk really, really fast. Thank you. Okay, so we talked about retention rate a lot, success rate a lot, persistence rate. Um, Caterina mentioned, uh, these, oh, I can't read that. I was gonna read that. The distinct count of retained students divided by distinct count of tall enrolled students. So retained students just means a student who obtained a grade, not including withdrawals other than military withdrawals. So Columbia does exclude those, uh, military withdrawals. The attrition rate, the distinct count of dropped out students, sorry, by distinct count of, uh, students. So when I say dropped out, that means the attrition rate is derived from credit only students, and it's when they withdraw from all of their classes, including excused withdrawals. And then we look at Columbia's persistence rate, or the definition of persistent rate, I'm sorry. The distinct count of two term persisted students divided by a distinct count of students.
I would say that's pretty good reading from it's kind of envy
I'm impressed myself a little bit. Uh, thank you. Um, I put that on each of the slides. So MJC showed both a one term persistent rate and a two term persistent rate. I focused on the two term persistent rate, and that is just a student, again, that's enrolled for a term that enrolls in a secondary primary term. So fall to fall, spring to spring. Our acad-, it's okay, it's all right. I can talk really fast. Uh, our filters at the top here, we have academic year. And on every single page, there will be an academic year filter that will drop down. It's okay, wherever it takes, it's fine, it's fine. Oh, that was perfect. Okay, so right now all of them are selected. So twenty eighteen all the way through twenty three, twenty four. We also have student modality. This one, I'm trying to linger on a little bit because I think when people think of modality, they're talking about courses. Is this an online course? Is this an in-person course? Student modality is looking at within the timeframe, did that student take an in-person class only? Then they're an in-person student modality. But for example, if one term they take an in-person class, next term they take online only, that means that their student modality method would be hybrid. So just wanted to point that out because I think often it's, um, force based. I talked really fast. Then we also have, uh, filters for credit load. There it goes. Uh, full time, half time, less than half time, three quarters time. And then I left the trustee area map up here because one, it's very fun to have a map visuals. But if one wanted to, they could look at how these rates differ between trustee areas. We also have, uh, academic program. I'm glad I took, uh, Fire Tech today since they came and showed us. But you can see how these rates differ between academic, uh, programs, and you can search anyone that you like. We also have special programs, which of course I'm not going to get into because that was the first half of our presentation. Each one of these pages also has demographic detail. So we can see how retention rate, attrition rate and two term persistent rate might differ between ethnicity and race, age range or gender. So with any one of these, for example, if we wanted to see, uh, how female retention, attrition, persistent rate might differ from male. Um, any one of these categories, these rates will change depending on what lens you want to look through it. Modesto's homepage has the same filters as Columbia, except for the student modality filter, but otherwise it's exactly the same. Um, they also have this demographic detail page, again, same information, race, ethnicity, age, gender, um, depending on how you want to dice things. And then the last thing, it's going so, so I could probably take a sip of wine. The last page is statewide rates. Um, again, when we get there, every page has the academic year, uh, filter on it. So we can look at one more or all of these. We have the homepages for Columbia and MJC. And then there's this college filter, and this lists every community college in California. So we can search by a specific college if you'd like to, or you can just scroll and pick which ones you want to look at and compare. We also have the state average rates, our district here. And then that bottom table is all of the California community colleges. But there's two like really, really exciting, thrilling things you need to talk about first, and that's data limitations and definitions. Um, and the first one is, as we know, all the colleges in California do not have the same term structure. So if we're looking at one college that, uh, measures fall, spring and summer, and another that says fall, winter, spring and summer, there's going to be some schools that have a more accurate rate than others. So that's something to keep in mind. Another is equal contribution of terms. So assuming that from fall to spring, there's not a significant change in enrollment. So we're assuming that they're rather consistent in their enrollment. And then lastly, it's assuming the stability of rates. So if Yuba, for example, one term they have a retention rate of fifty percent, and the next term they have a retention rate of a hundred percent, this is not going to capture that, uh, it's not going to show you that there was a massive difference from term to term for these colleges. So those are limitations to keep in mind and two definitions, also very thrilling and exciting and important. Um, the retention, the way that state defines retention
Straight feet.
I did, because I am very serious. They count retention as grades of A through F, pass, no pass, um, incomplete, incomplete pass, incomplete, no pass. But the one to keep in mind is withdrawn without permission and without achieved a final passing grade. And the reason why I say that is because there is a slight difference in internal coding, at least with Columbia. I'm more familiar with Columbia's coding than MJC's. But for example, Columbia only counts, uh, military withdrawal when identifying retained students. So the state says without, uh, permission and without achieving a final grade. So that's another thing to keep in mind because that will have an effect on the total population that's deriving these stats. And then success, the state defines success as A through C, pass, incomplete, A through C, um, or incomplete pass. And again, I'm more familiar with Columbia's coding. Um, but one difference that I found is that the state definition, uh, the state excludes withdrawals and it excludes Ds and Fs, and Columbia does not. And again, I'm bringing this up because when we look at rates that appear on this statewide page, and then you look at the internal, uh, coding page, some of the, uh, retention rates are going to match perfectly and others are not. And it's because of these limitations and it's because of the differences and aggregations and the way these things are derived. And again, I say that because I know that after this, all of you are going to want to play with this dashboard and look at numbers. This one, for example, eighty six and eighty six. So external and internal are matching. That's fantastic. That's what we want. If we go to another year, uh, nineteen twenty. And we look at Columbia, average retention rate ninety four, and we go to their internal coding, that's ninety four. This will not be the case for every academic year. So if you go on here and you say, well, this page says eighty five, but the statewide's page says eighty six, remember the exciting limitations and the definitions. Um, yeah, and I think last time we talked about, uh, publishing reports, working on trying to embed them into the PowerPoints. That way I can just share it with you guys and you can play with it when you want to. That's it.
Any, hold on a second. Question, any questions from the public? Please. Come up to the mics and people can hear you.
I was just wondering on the two term persistence rate data, and I saw it was like forty percent or whatnot. Um, when it says the academic year, does that only include freshmen or does that include? Okay, so, cause, and I think that's a tough stat because a two term persistence for a sophomore, we don't want them to be back the next year. So, so that forty percent is actually, it's a tough stat to weed out. Like, is that good or bad, right? Because we got rid of, you know.
That would be a fantastic filter to add is first year students, second year students.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Nicolau.
Where'd you go, Samantha?
Oh, there was another question.
I'm always really impressed by your love of Power BI. If you were, if you were talking to your grandma, what would be the two things you hope she remembered from all of this?
From the Power BI or from the whole?
Let's say power, let's, whatever.
First of all, how easy it is to use and that anybody could do it. Um, but in terms of data points, probably comparing the state retention rate to the district and to our colleges because it's pretty great. On one thing I didn't put on this video that if you're playing with this and you want to see, if you click on where it says average retention rate in the big table, you can filter it by, okay, who has the top retention rate? Who has the top success rate? Columbia is not very far down from that very top. So that's probably something that I would brag about, I guess.
So that what I'm hearing the takeaway being, if it was a grandma situation is you guys are doing great and compared to state, you're there. That's what I'm hearing is like grandma.
Just the, where it's frozen at right now, the retention rate, the average there is eighty eight, and you can see Columbia is at eighty nine and Modesto is at eighty six. So I would say yay.
I think there was another question from the public. Professor?
Oh, it's more of a comment. We have lots of students that last three years, and that's reasonable for lots of degree paths and student life situations. So maybe instead of cutting out by two years, maybe cut out by whether they've achieved a degree or not. If you're, if we're thinking about persistence as a good number or a bad number, right? I'm hoping that a student persists until they get a degree.
Absolutely, yeah.
I just want to make a comment real quick. Yeah, so, um, persistence rates in general are measured by the terms of either fall to spring or fall to fall, and it excludes students that have graduated or transferred. So we take that into account to make sure that if a student's supposed to be gone, they should be gone. We don't want to include them in that number because they've moved on, moved on to bigger and better things. So for example, with the FIRE programs, that's a one semester FIRE academy. So they shouldn't be here in spring. And so those numbers should be, our retention rates should reflect that. I mean, our, our persistence rate should reflect that.
Any other questions? Thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item six point four, there's, there's been some questions raised about the chance of recruitment process. As many of you know, we have an election coming up in November, which could see some changes in the, in the Board of Trustees. So the tri-chairs felt that we should not begin this process until after the election. But we are, we have been working on a process and we'll, we'll share that at that time. Any other comments about that? Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I appreciate, uh, what you said there. I'd ask that this be, uh, agendized uh, here for our conversation. And it's just that, uh, Dr. Young provided us, uh, in May uh, that he'd be retiring. And, uh, there wasn't any election, you know, on the horizon, uh, that close, but we didn't take any formal action to start a process. The, the thing I, I think I'd like to, I don't know, get across is that, that, uh, having a formal process is a good thing, but it takes time. And the question comes down really to, to two options. Will you, um, hire a search firm? Or will you do it in-house? And there are pros and cons, but at some point you've got to make that decision. And the longer you wait, well, then the longer it is to get to a decision on who the next chancellor, uh, will be. And whichever process that you use, there'll be pros and cons, but if you wait, and let's imagine, well, there wasn't a board consensus on any of the finalists, maybe on the first search. And that could happen. It's happened other times. Well, now you're, you're, uh, you're running out of time to maybe repeat, repeat a process. So my request is that we agendize this as a, an action item in November, maybe after the election, to put an RFP, uh, in the field, a request for proposal.
If we go with a search.
Yeah, so, yeah, and we would, could vote that up or down.
Yeah, we'll be glad, we'll be glad to do that.
And then the, by, and even if you put an RFP in the field, it doesn't mean that, you know, you'll select one of them necessarily. But each month that goes by squeezes the amount of time left on the other end. So I'm advocating that in November, we vote up or down whether we're going to use a search firm. I would advocate, I'll tell you now that because it's a high profile, in fact, it's the most high profile executive position in the district, that we would, we would solicit and use a, a search firm for the process. But I'll listen to that.
You're, you're, that, the, an action item is not agendized. We appreciate your comments, but we will not take any action tonight.
Understood.
Unless you have anything further to, to say, I'd like to move on.
Yeah, I do have something further. About be done. So, uh, this, so last month, there was, if you remember, the, the, uh, agenda was changed. So So uh normally we get comments and we have requests for agenda items at the end of the meeting, right? And so, but last meeting, we, we changed the order, right? And shame on me, I didn't think that we were not going to have requests for action items at the end of that meeting. So uh I'll take that. That was my fault. But I think that was, then there was a missed opportunity in uh, in last month to, to get this out, so we can be moving on this. Whether we take the, ultimately take the action to um, to select a search firm or not, we, we've got to take the vote. So there you go.
November.
Wait, I'd like, I'd like to echo what trustee Davis said, you know? It, it doesn't matter what, in my opinion, first of all, uh President Richards, uh this is not about any one of us. Uh, this is about the board serving the needs of the district and the community. This is a, this is, this is a community process just as much as it is a district process. And, you know, yes, this is the only employee that we, the board, get to, get to hire. But at the same time, that person is the one working with the presidents, working with the internal community, the external community, and guiding the future of the, of the district. So it's not about any one of us. And, and I don't want to think leaving this meeting tonight that our voices, either one trustee or more, is being shut out of this process, because that's what I'm getting right now. That none of, you know, because we're not in the majority, we're not being heard, and you can just go fly a kite. I don't think that's fair to this board. I don't think it's fair to, to the community.
Let me just stop you right there. That's, that's not the intent, and if you feel that way, I, I'm, I'm sorry. But we, we, we have a group called tri-chairs.
Well, now I want to bring, it's interesting you bring that up, because in the past, when I was part of the tri-chairs, we, we were told repeatedly, wait a minute, we, the full body of the board, want to talk about this. And you know, trustee Beggs and I got, got beat up sometimes because, you know, you and, and others would say, what? And that was a valid concern. So now I'm hearing, well, the tri-chairs made this decision. Again, I go back to, it's about all of us. And it's about the community, both internally and externally, having a participation in this process. Thank you.
Any other comments from uh trustees? Okay, we'll move on to association reports. Sure, come on up.
Thank you. Um, Giselle Flores, MJC. Um, I reject this idea that a process was stalled, um even though Chancellor Young announced his retirement in May due to um not knowing that there was going to be an election. Um, we all knew that three trustees were up for election. For a while now, there's a whole timeline and process. And so I really reject this idea of, well, now we're starting because now we know that there's an election. I really applaud trustee Garrett for your words. Those sentiments are felt by so many of us faculty, so thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to association reports. Uh, California School Employees Association, Patrick Krebs. Are you on duty tonight? Thank you for keeping us safe.
Good evening, President Richards, Chancellor Young, and fellow trustees. Please let me begin by saying I am on duty this evening and in uniform. My report to you does not represent the campus safety department, but solely my role as CSCA president and on behalf of CSCA four twenty. CSCA Chapter four twenty is appreciative of the district's quick response to the concerns brought forward last month regarding the campus safety, uh campus student transportation. Classified have expressed relief that students have a much more convenient and much quicker ride between east and west campus for now at MJC. Some have expressed concern that in the spring semester, students would be in the same situation again at, as the beginning of this semester. It was shared yesterday by President Sanders in his email update that the plan will be in place permanently beginning in the spring. CSCA leadership would also like to extend appreciation to the board for considering the classified Senate's request last month for more time to request copies of the district's board recordings and providing past recordings that were thought to have been lost. We are thankful that the district was able to provide the requested copies. CSCA is pleased to announce that the tentative agreement and several MOUs were ratified by the membership last month. CSCA is quickly looking forward to next year's negotiation session and looking forward to working with the new lead negotiator on the district's team. Um, I would like to add something. Classified have been concerned about the timeline for the chancellor's search. And so I do appreciate trustee Davis as well as the board bringing this up and moving this forward and, and starting to take action. Because it has been a one, like, it, it's been a concern and classified have been discussing it and wondering what's, what's happening in the next six, eight, nine months here. So we appreciate the board moving forward with that.
Thank you very much.
Concludes my report report.
Faculty liaison to the board, Professor McKissick.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you. Um, some, some commendations. First, I want to support what uh President Giselle said about uh the search and other remarks from the board. I think the more collegial it is, the better, and uh what I'm hearing is that the board will commit itself to make exactly that. Um, additional commendations for the continuing work on providing student transportation between east and west campus at MJC. I know that MJC President Sanders and Board President Richards have been making special effort in this regard. Tonight, I'm inspired by my students. This happened last time too. But what's also inspiring me is consideration of uh an election coming up and our own organizational efforts to do what we do. In my class, as we study how to become a, an advocate effectively, covering the critical issues with sound evidence and clear expression, while bearing in mind that the objective should be getting at the truth. Well, that's fine. During this election season, students have been asking me about relational issues. How do you advocate constructively with people who are invested in a fundamentally different worldview than yours? And when they ask me about that, I, I, sometimes I talk about the reds and the blues in my family. So I've passed on some advice, and this includes, first, it works better when you get to know the person you're trying to convince. It works better if you start with common ground and values. For example, common values among us are student success and therefore student support and their general well-being. While discussing, keep presuming good intentions. It works better if you find common ground on the matter at hand. And keep emphasizing agreement whenever you hear it. If you're not hearing it, try harder. When I was first selected for my position, I immediately found myself working closely on behalf of the faculty association with trustees with whom I had very different personal political views, to put it understated. However, there was more than enough agreement and more than enough to do together and more than enough basis on which to form a good relationship. And I remember saying to my wife at the time, because I was feeling very sad about what was going on in my country, the tribalism, and that my own experience was giving me hope about, it doesn't have to be that way. It works better if you stick to the matter at hand. Do not let it drift into larger issues with trigger tribalism. It works better if you ask questions, especially about why they hold a particular position. Sometimes you will hear a reason that you did not expect, and it's definitely not reflecting the character in your head. Finally, it works better if you avoid either or thinking often other options are available. Be open to that. And lastly, once again, I'm going to bring up an anecdote about trustee Garrett. You've probably heard it before, but bear with me. Obviously, it had a big impact on me. Some other faculty members and I were advocating faculty positions to a board that had a very different culture than this one. Uh, not every member of the board, but overall, they simply were not going to engage. It was like talking to that wall you hear about. We expected no better. Outside, I first met Darren Garrett, who was visibly angry. He was offended because that board was showing no regard for relationship going forward. He said that was bad management and poor stewardship. As he put it, maybe you can't agree on something, but remember, you have to go back to work with each other the next day. I was very impressed by that. Uh subsequently, he was elected trustee, and subsequently I was put into this position. And so I can't help but wonder if I've ever said anything that had such a big impact on, on uh trustee Garrett. I hope so. But that had a big impact on me. I guess you could sum it up as relationship matters. And if you can't agree on this issue, remember, there's going to be the next issue and the next one and the next one. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is, is Professor listening up here? There you are. Come on up. You're up. I didn't see you. You didn't bring any baked goods, so I thought, eh, eh, okay.
Uh, good evening, Chancellor Young and trustees. We welcome you up, up the hill to Columbia. It's always nice to show off our beautiful campus. Um, it's really hot still, so uh it's one of those things. As we're approaching week eight of the fall semester, the Senate is preparing our faculty hiring proposals. There are around seventeen hiring proposals on the table, and um we're going to, those are going to be, and we're going to get them all, right, Dr. Tran, right? Um, we're gonna, um, there are seventeen proposals that we ranked on October eighteenth and then sent to Dr. Tran. We trust that these positions will be thoroughly examined and decisions will be student-focused, right? Uh, last month, I stated that faculty would like the board to request the district to start conducting exit interviews. We have not heard any movement on this, but that doesn't mean it hasn't happened. I don't know if it has or not. If it has, thank you. Um, but, but faculty are still concerned about the exit interviews. I'd like to say it again that at Columbia, we've seen numerous individuals leave. An exit interview would be a crucial tool to examine the individuals and, the individual, individuals' employment experience on our campus, right? Um, a handful of Columbia college.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you advocating that for everyone who leaves or just faculty?
I would say everyone who leaves. Yes, please. I think that's.
I think we're moving in that direction. We heard from HR today that there were some things going on. That's a great suggestion.
Yeah, every, every, yeah, every, everyone who, um, positive, negative, whatever, right? It's, it's one of those things, like, how come you are, are leaving our beautiful place, right? A handful of Columbia College individuals are happy to be on the newly created YCCD twenty thirty-nine committee. This is a joint college and district committee that will assist with tackling the tasks of, okay, add it up, AB one-one-one-one and AB nine twenty-eight, okay? That's twenty thirty. I thought it, I thought it was pretty brilliant, actually. But anyways, a big thank you for Giselle Flores for organizing uh this big task. We're actually really excited. It's a lot of, it's collaboration with both campuses, right, and the district with this. It's Columbia College, MJC uh with district help to tackle these, and it's, it's a really good uh collaboration. Um, with the state mandated curriculum changes, uh, it's been challenging to both colleges. Columbia College is lacking a curriculum specialist, which has, which has made it extra challenging to navigate this process. I would like to recognize our curriculum chair, Stephanie Beaver Guzman, for her hard work and dedication, Jerry Porsho, and Kelsey Gillen for taking on extra work, and also Alyssa Creighton for balancing uh for balancing her position and coming back to uh assist in curriculum matters. Um, a, a shout out to Dr. Donna Cooper, who's offering all kinds of um guidance as well. But we're in a, we're in a tight spot up here when it comes to curriculum right now, and, and, and we need a curriculum specialist. That's just kind of, kind of how that is. Real quick.
Is that, is there a recruitment for that, or is that a new position, or?
Um, it's out, uh, yeah, it's, it's been out there. It's just, yeah. Uh, a TOC, TOC. Thank you. Whoever said that. Um, so in closing, um, you know, thank you trustees, Davis and Garrett, for moving the conversation about the chancellor's search in the spotlight. Um, President Richards, I know that both colleges feel very strong that this process needs to be professional and transparent. Um, thank you for your time and safe travels.
Thank you. Modesto Junior College Academic Senate President, Professor Flores.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Young. There has been a lot of work going on in the Senate related to curriculum over the past month, as my colleague just shared. I'm happy to report that District Council approved an ad hoc committee to review district level needs related to AB nine twenty-eight and AB eleven eleven. All creative credit for the name YCCD twenty thirty-nine committee goes to Dean Angelica Guzman, who, when we couldn't think of a name, said, let's just add them together. Um, so I appreciate her creativity. I look forward to constituents from each college and the district working together to make changes that will benefit our students. Faculty at each college are working hard to update curriculum for the phase one classes approved for common, common course numbering under AB eleven eleven. I appreciate that faculty are not only working diligently with their colleagues in their discipline at MJC, but also with their counterparts at Columbia to discuss alignment across the district. It has been a pleasure working with our sister college on this heavy curriculum lift. We have also had great conversations in the Senate, including a recent unanimous vote of approval to nominate three individuals for the Black Educator Excellence Award. Uh, Dr. Andrea Wilson as the administrator nominee, Dr. Cheryl Williams-Jackson as the faculty nominee, and Kimberly Gibbs as the hidden hero nominee. Really excited. The Senate appreciates the work these three women do on behalf of students and are proud to nominate them. We would also like to thank Dr. Schrader for her work with Dr. Wilson and Vice Chancellor Stewart for their quick response to students by getting a bus route going for the semester for students to get back and forth between the campuses. There are two topics I would like to end my report with. The first topic is in response to the uh recorded policy and procedures, our board policy meeting. I was able to attend virtually from my car on my way to another meeting. Uh, while discussing board policy twenty-four-ten, I overheard some questions about the board policy and administrative procedures review process and wanted to clarify the Senate's position on this process. If changes are made by the board to any administrative procedures, justification for these changes will be provided and should align with the reasoning for changes outlined in the VP. I have also placed a new time for these meetings on my calendar so that I can make sure that the Senate's voice is represented. Lastly, the faculty liaison to the board was directed by the Senate to extend an invitation to the trustees who attended N Court to join the Senate meeting on October tenth and to urge that we work together on equity issues. You reported out at our last Senate meeting noting that trustees Richards, Beggs, and Hinton respectfully declined to attend that meeting date. In response to that report, the Senate further directed Allen and myself to open the invitation to include the remaining Senate meeting dates for the fall semester, which I'm happy to provide you with if that's helpful. Tonight, uh, the faculty liaison to the board's report was not at the direction of the Senate because it would have included this direction from the last meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Leadership Team Advisory Council, uh Dean Mackey, are you here? No. We have a substitute. Please come up and tell us who you are.
Good evening, Board members, President Richards and, Richards and Chancellor Young. I am Mike Igoe, and I'm the Dean of Student Services at Columbia College. We have just a few announcements to share. Thank you. Few announcements to share. I'm sorry Laura Mackey couldn't be here. She.
Not a problem.
Come in her place. First of all, LTAC, or Leadership Team Advisory Council, is working on our communication plan. And we are also planning for a YCCD Leadership Team General Meeting in November or early December. Unfortunately, many of the constituent groups have regularly scheduled meetings throughout the year. It takes a lot to pull off a Leadership Team Advisory Council meeting, so that's why that's noteworthy for you tonight. We also have uh some payroll concerns that uh the Leadership Team Advisory Council would like to share. We understand and appreciate that new processes take time to align. However, the leadership team has concerns with the new payroll approving timelines, which require approval prior to hours worked. LTAC looks forward to collaborating on creating a process that is workable for all involved in the future. As far as HR trainings, LTAC would also like to encourage finding solutions to help Columbia College leadership team to be more involved in the HR professional development trainings. As new train, trainings are added, consideration of location and timing to allow for active participation by the Columbia teams would be appreciated. And then finally, I want to end on a high note and thank all of our students, faculty, and classified professionals who participated throughout the accreditation site visits. I think they represented both campuses very well, and it was great to see so much participation in the process. This concludes the LTAC report. Thank you. This concludes the LTAC report. Thank you for your time.
Before you go, I always get really concerned when I hear anyone concerned about if they're going to get paid on time. Trustee Stewart, is this something that we're already working on and?
We do have a new process.
Trustee, I'm sorry, administrative.
We do have a new process and anytime you have a new process, establishing the timelines is difficult. Keeping it brief, payroll date is the tenth. And if the employees are working through the thirty first, when does that get turned in so that payroll can do their jobs, that the money can get to the bank, so that the bank can transmit the funds to the employees? That usually happens by about the sixth or the seventh of the month. And so we have two or three business days to turn it around. And so.
Is that possible? That doesn't sound.
That's why we have said turn in your time before the last day of the month. We were, I think, one month into it. We need to continue to fine tune it. And so representing payroll, we will continue to work with both colleges to make sure that we find a way that is effective and make sure that employees are paid on time.
Well, and you should know that YFA President Green raised a similar concern and trustee took care of it. So I think we'll be in better shape for that, but thank you for raising it.
I agree. I appreciate your time.
Is Assembly Faculty Association President Brian Green?
Good evening, trustees, President Richards, and Chancellor Young. As always, glad to see everyone at Columbia and glad that we finally have some slightly cooler weather to share with everybody. It's been a busy day. YFA hosted a retirement workshop earlier this afternoon. And the volleyball team is playing down in Oak Pavilion. Unfortunately, last I checked, they're down to College of the Sequoias, but hopefully they pull it back in the end. It's, it's also been a busy few days and I wanted to just share that over the weekend, I was able to attend the La Fiesta event that occurred down in Carkey Park. The Columbia College Dance Group, as well as the group from Modesto, were terrific. And my daughter spent the rest of the weekend trying to mimic all of their moves. It's quite cute. Much appreciation to Vanessa Maro Marai and all the other folks who made that happen. Columbia obviously has fewer events than MJC does, but we're mighty in the ones that we're able to offer. I would also like to share my appreciation for the number of faculty who have announced their retirements early this year. Early retirement announcements aid in the hiring prioritization process and help ensure that the colleges are able to plan for what comes next. So thank you to all those folks that have done that. One more appreciation, and we're talking about payroll. Tomorrow, the district is paying out the retroactive part-time parity checks agreed upon in our last round of negotiations. These payments signify the concrete progress we've made towards our shared parity goals and will benefit hundreds of faculty. These payments are occurring in addition to the regular payroll that is already paid on the tenth. And I know it took a lot of work to calculate and process. Big thank you to everyone making that happen. Just a quick comment about negotiations. We've met twice thus far this semester and are making progress. There seems to be broad agreement between both teams regarding streamlining some aspects of the evaluation process, as well as the rehire process for part-time faculty. And I'm hopeful that we can find similar agreement once we get to the more substantive details as negotiations continue. Finally, publishing the updated contract is going a bit slower than I would have hoped, but I think the end is in sight and I look forward to signing the finished product here soon. This concludes my report. Thank you very much and have a.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the Classified Senate Activity Reports. Then we'll start off with Columbia College President Abby Sunday.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me tonight. My report will be a little shorter than some of my colleagues. I am pleased to announce that our Senate participation has greatly increased over the last few months and in the fall semester. We have a lot of new employees that have come to the college and they are all taking an active role in the Senate, attending meetings, filling committees and screening committees already, so that is wonderful. We have all of our exec officers filled except for our president-elect, which is also very wonderful. We have almost all of our committee seats filled on district and local councils, so we are very pleased to report that. And we have tri-chairs in every single one of the councils that has a tri-chair available. Our classified hiring prioritization is out and will be out for another month. We will be receiving proposals and we'll rank and score them at the end of November and get them to Dr. Tran for review. We're going to embark on some constitution review over the next few months and into the spring semester. It has been since 2018 that we have reviewed this document and we noticed over the last year that we have some holes and some language that are outdated. We no longer make copies and disseminate them to every single classified staff. They're now available on board docs, so some of those types of things that need to be cleaned up and some new things that we'd like to put in there. I'd like to thank trustee Davis for bringing and agendizing the chancellor's search. That has been a great concern for Classified Senate, as well as our union that Patrick mentioned as well. We mentioned it to Chancellor Young when we got to meet earlier last month, that we have many classifieds that are interested in participating and eagerly awaiting this to come out. It often takes a year or more, as you know, with this process, and we were already behind if we were to fill it by the time he is to exit. So we look forward to hearing your timeline and forthcoming. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm Minnesota Junior College Classified Senate President Amanda Cannon. Not here. Okay.
Yeah, I think.
What's that?
I think, well, she wasn't able to make it.
Okay, very good. Now let's move on to the Students Senate Activity Reports from the Associated Students at Columbia College Vice President Joanne Romero. Welcome.
Joanna.
Good morning. I'm not good morning, I'm sorry. Good evening trustees. Before I begin my report, I would like to say thank Vice President Dr. Cheryl Schrader and Vice President Dr. Andrea Wilson for getting that direct bus route between our campuses sooner than, sooner than the expected timeline. We, I really appreciate that, that they were able to hear us out as students and getting that route, you know, established really soon. And so I have a few updates. So first off, I want to begin that we are close to having a full Senate for ASMJC, which is pretty exciting because, you know, we have, we're almost close to having a full team. We have been doing interviews these past two weeks, yeah, these, these past few weeks. We had three interviews this week and we have two spots open, so let's see. My, the executives and I were still deciding on, you know, whether or not the Senate, those spots will be given to those people. So we'll see how that turns out. And our, our team is going to be split this weekend. We, some of the ASMJC members are going to be going to CSO, which is our conference for leadership. It's going to be in Los Angeles. We are very excited to get this opportunity, you know, to get to learn and meet other students from other community colleges and using those skills that we learned at the conference to become better leaders and to better serve our students. And the other members that are going to stay in home, they will be volunteering at our Hispanic Education Conference. It's going to be the, it's going to be the forty-first annual one. And they will be volunteering all day. It's going to be on Saturday. And we do have, this month, we do have our spooky night. It's going to be on Halloween from, from four to nine. And we are, since we did have a great turnout last, last year, we decided to expand our space and do it outside, outside of the building that we used, that we had out last year. And our MJC clubs are going to be hosting little booths where they're going to be giving out, where they're going to be giving out candy and having games. So that's going to be pretty fun. And we will be providing food and having a haunted house. And ASMJC does extend a personal invitation to the Board and Chancellor Henry Young. And so you guys can join us on spooky night and we hope to see you there. And before I conclude my report, upon the Board's approval and on behalf of ASMJC, we would like to extend our congratulations to the Basic Needs Director Jonathan Arias because of our close collaboration with him over the years and we wish him the best of luck in his new position.
Joanna, who else do you have with you? I see a couple other.
Oh, so this is my director of, sorry, I'm thinking, my director of political development Brett Baptist. This is my Senator Celeste Randolph. And over there is my executive secretary Ruth Harris-Gambler. My advisor is right there.
Thank you for coming. At this point, we'll move on to six point five, which is presentations from Chancellor Young.
Thank you.
Tobias or Columbia ASMJC. We had Tobias, but didn't know he wasn't going to be.
Good evening, YC Board of Trustee members, special guests, and to all of our attendees here tonight. My name is Leanne Joannans. I am the current ASCC Vice President. I'll be taking over Tobias today since they are out of the country in Japan right now. I am pleased to update, present an update on our upcoming activities, as well as our initiatives for the benefit of the student communities. Right now, ASCC has been really involved in creating events to boost student participation on campus. So we'd like to announce our spectacular week of frights, which will happen the week of Halloween. We are excited to announce that we are in the final stages of planning it. It'll be a campus-wide event designed to bring fun and engagement to students leading up to Halloween. Throughout the week, we will host three themed dress-up days where students can participate by wearing costumes corresponding to different daily themes. In addition to the theme days, we'll be organizing a variety of interactive events such as pumpkin carving contests, spooky movie screenings, and a haunted student lounge. Our goal is to provide opportunities for students to relieve stress, build community, and embrace the spirit of the season. We are also in the preparation for finals. We're doing our traditional cram night event, which is a late-night study session where students can come together in the library to study in a supportive and focused environment. Faculty and peer tutors will be available for additional academic support, ensuring students get the help they need as they prepare for their exams. We are also organizing relaxing activities like coloring stations and simple trivia to give students a break if they need it. I'd like to highlight ASCC's participation in the accreditation. The ASCC was delighted to have been included in the Columbia Colleges Accreditation Site Visit Interviews as it allowed for the ASCC to not only give students perspective on the college, but also give our own personal experience to the visiting accreditation team. The ASCC is an important part of the college and works tenaciously to ensure that fellow students' needs are being met, as well as our comprised of students allow us to give accurate experienced feedback. This opportunity was valuable learning experience for both the ASCC and our fellow student leadership. One that will allow us to further how we can support our peers. We'd also like to highlight our clubs on campus. They were at a down-low for a little while during COVID, but we have recently ten clubs now with more coming. We have continued to see an increase and are excited to announce that we have made great strides in creating more solid foundation with our updates to the club handbook, our chartering paperwork, and our rechartering paperwork, and are overall excited to continue providing support for student clubs. In closing, we are thrilled about the upcoming months and events we have planned to engage and support our student body. We are looking forward to continuing the men rule and meaningful experiences for our students in providing resources they need to succeed, both academically and personally. Thank you guys for your continued support.
Thank you. Do you have any of your people here?
I was the only one able to attend tonight.
That's because they're off the volleyball game, right? Thank you. Chancellor Young, sorry for skipping you.
Thank you. I'm going to begin by calling on Dr. Tran to give us a report from Columbia College.
Thank you, Chancellor Young. Good evening, Board Trustees. Good evening. Welcome to Columbia College, MJC, and our folks in the house tonight. I'm going to continue more with accreditation visit. To say the least, it is my personal thank you from the bottom of my heart because it was really difficult. If you know accreditation, the president is not allowed to be near anything. Like you have to sit in your office and then each of the constituent group will come in and interview with the accreditation team. And we have four inquiries. So meaning we have to set up our faculty, our staff, our students. And at the end of each day, the team would report and say, this is what your team is telling us about the college. And kudos to our students because the accreditation team, you know what? Your student knows everything about the college. They actually know about the resources. And we even went as far as to say, the report said that this college is all about the student. Is that true or not? And our students say absolutely yes. And because of that, the accreditation team shared with me the compelling findings. So compelling finding is these are the things that we find very exciting about your college. It's not accommodation where you get the reward, but one of the accommodations or the compelling finding is such. When a student asks your college for information or resources, your college actually turn around within forty-eight hours with an answer or the process of what is next to be. That's really commendable to our staff or faculty and just everybody at Columbia College. Second of all, for your side of the college, you have a very robust program. And you saw tonight our FIRE Academy, our EMS, and our K-16. And we're on that note, please, I invite the Board Trustee, our audience, our team, if we have time to visit our FIRE Academy, when they actually do on the training at the Sierra Conservation Center. It is amazing what you see our student go through. So I extend that invitation. The other compelling finding, just as our research show, how our retention rate is ninety-three percent above, it's really reaching in at the high school level. And therefore, the accreditation acknowledged that we are serving over eight hundred do-enrollment students. And it's not something by chance. We, a small college among the very few colleges, I repeat it again and again, do have a director of do enrollment. So that is what Columbia does with dozen of C cap. And also serving our vulnerable population, which is the rising scholars. And yesterday, right Melissa, the day before, we received additional funding for the rising scholars because we did such a good job to serve that. And overall, the accreditation team felt that very inclusive, very supportive collaboration. Everybody felt valued, motivated. And because of the great work that the college did, the accreditation, everybody ready? They're going to invite us to present at a conference in every aspect of accreditation because we, our district, actually, and among the first colleges to switch to new standards. So that's one thing. Then we are the first college to have an onsite focus visit under the new standard. So they really want us to share our best practice, how we get the whole college ready for accreditation. And on that note, I think that's a lot around accreditation. But also kudos to Courtney, her team, outreach, retention, single, everybody. It really, when they take, takes a village, it took a little village and a lot more for our Jumber Day, a Clem Jumber Day, and it was so successful. And of course, my brain with more ideas. But I think it's also a great day for us to invite our partner to come on campus and really highlight because you taught each of the different program and you get to see our faculty, our employee, our student demonstrate. And it was a fun day, great food. And that's it. I'm going to stop. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Sanders, MJC.
Good evening. I'm going to ask Graciela to bring up some slides here in a minute to try to do a little more visual rather than just verbal. But a couple of things to highlight, including our accreditation visit team as well. So echoing the same real positive, several of you made time out of your day to attend to one of the core inquiries and to come in and meet with our team. And they reported really enjoying that visit. They got the information that they needed and they had really great things to say about our college. And thanks to Patrick Betancourt, thanks to Mike Smedshammer for the extensive efforts in writing the report, authoring that whole process, shepherding that whole day, very, very successful day. We do think that there's going to be something that they're asking us to follow up on in the world of distance education. And we're prepared to take that on and to, they're asking for something that's in the right realm of making sure our students are learning. So we're going to do that. We're going to follow through. Should be, should be well received. Enrollment is thriving at Minnesota Junior College. We've exceeded our fall 2019 number pre-pandemic. And we're actually knocking on the door of 2016's number, which was a little bit higher. So we're going in the right direction. If you're interested and available on Saturday morning, I'd like to personally invite you to join me down in the front row for the Hispanic Education Conference at nine o'clock. This is an incredible event. It's loud. So if you, we're hearing aids, take them out that day. If you bring earplugs instead, that would be good because it's, and there's dancing involved. It is really quite the scene, but it's a great celebration, the Forty-First Annual Hispanic Education Conference. Got word last night that the Sutter Hospital is on board with moving forward on a cohort of learners for the nursing program starting in the spring semester and maybe even the following fall. So things are looking up in that realm. Also on Saturday, if you're looking for an afternoon event, on behalf of Minnesota Junior College, I will be rappelling down the face of the big black building on McHenry Avenue for the over-the-edge fundraiser. You can, actually, there's a beer garden at the bottom. You can watch people fall to their doom. There's stakes on it, I think. And then slides. Well, no, I had to sign a waiver and everything, right? A couple of things I wanted to share with you that are going on at the college and have happened just this week after my report. We had our democracy in the public space, and Graciela is just gonna kind of click through these. Dr. Tani Pentil Sayuke, trying to, she's the former Chief Justice for California Supreme Court. She spoke to our students. Can you back up one picture there? And show, look at this audience. One more slide back. Look at the audience. We had hundreds of students. It was standing room only in this room. She shared some really some inspiring words about standing up for what's right, having a voice, pursuing your education and all of those things. So you'll see a photo in the next one that has our group there, the organizational committee, and I got to pose with them. Great faculty members that are putting their heart into their subject matter on behalf of the institution. Next slide is going to show you it's our bus. So after work the other day, I went by about 4:30 or so, and I saw, sure enough, our bus. We've got signs up about the bus service. There's a bus. It's a small bus. That's about how many students they have. There's one of our students getting off. And in the next slide, you'll see three students getting off. And then you'll see this very happy bus driver who I asked, hey, are you getting some students on the bus? And she said, yep, we're getting students on. So it's working very well. Trevor, and then Dr. Wilson and Dr. Schrader did a great job of getting on that issue, and the StanRTA partnership has been fantastic. This is an interesting photo. It shows our dairy judging team in Michigan competing at the national competition, placing first for the ninth time out of 40. So we're talking, you know, about 25% of the time, Modesto Junior College beats out the national university teams. And as winners, they are going to Scotland next. And there is a signup sheet for chaperones. Trevor signed it. We're working on it. Who goes next? Next slide, we're gonna see, oh, our Nandi Conference happened last week, and you can see this beautiful group of leaders here who who went. And I wanted to highlight that the participants in this was a student. We had President Gianna Smith go as a student participant. We have classified staff members. In the back right, you can see Tanisha Jackson, who usually runs the audiovisual in the Modesto team who attended. We have faculty members, and we have Dr. Wilson as an administrative representative. All sorts of folks, all different levels, participating and encouraging one another to become strong leaders. And the last collection here, oh, yes. Shane got to show you fire trucks, so I get to show you a fire truck. Here's a bunch of fire gear on the ground and some young ladies in the background. And then the fire truck, come on, Graciela, there she is. So this is a young lady climbing the fire ladder at the first Modesto Junior College Women's Empowerment Camp. We had over 100 participants going up the ladder, putting on the fire gear, learning that they could become firefighters if they choose to. And it was really a terrific participation, a partnership with Modesto Fire Department, and really well received. So thank you.
The two of you reported incredible things, and I know that your updates to us in the president's letters often recap that even greater in detail. Do we share that with the local media? Because I feel like there's so, and this is Antonio's idea. I don't want to take it. But you guys, we, you do such good things, and I'm not convinced that everyone knows that. We're going to Scotland. We have people climbing. Like, you, there's so much to say here. And so I'd like to know if we share this.
There was a nice article in the Bee about the women on fire, and I happened to be at the Turlock Open House on Fire. People are pretty excited about that. The fact that you got 100 women, that's really great.
I've promised my Kiwanis Club that I'll pay in every time we get a good article about Modesto Junior College in the Bee, and it's gonna cost me another five bucks because we had another terrific article. So it just keeps coming.
To be paying us to give them such good content.
They're actually being a really good partner right now. They're focusing on matters of equity. You focused earlier today on matters of equity, asking about the success rates of our students and programs. We're all asking about the same things. Julieta Bisharian has been writing articles about various aspects of diversity, equity, the Women's Empowerment Camp, all these different things that are happening at the college, and it's really being well received.
Winning the national champion should be like.
Yes, well, we just haven't gotten that one out yet. We, I'm sure that one will come into the paper here soon with the Strong Ag Community. That's a really good suggestion. I'll make sure we get a press release out on that.
I was gonna, I would say that I can't share anything, but Columbia, good news. I mean, big news are coming. I just can't say it yet. So in that sense, trustee Nicolau, everything we do at Columbia College, there's news coming in that sense. I think it will wrap it up in a nice bow and a present for the college and the community. So just hold on a few weeks, but I cannot share it yet.
Thank you. You heard from both presidents regarding the accreditation visits. I want to add on my personal thanks to the faculty, support staff, and students and administrators who were involved in preparing for this visit. Seven years worth of work just completed and well done. Thank you for that. We have all heard about the Brown Act. Our meetings, such as this board meeting, and other meetings are governed by the Brown Act. Brown Act came about to bring consistency and order in holding public meetings so that there would be transparency in all meetings. And over time, Brown Act has been amended a little bit here, a little bit there, and a lot during COVID. Now, 2024, the pandemic is behind us, but the Brown Act remains, and we find it to be somewhat a hindrance in some respect. To that aspect, trustee Leslie Bex has written a position papers. And I want all of you to know that she spent a lot of time in drafting the position paper. We have asked our lobbyists, Townsend Public Affairs Associates, to take it forward to the California Legislature to approach legislators for consideration to make it more user-friendly when there are trustees and other public officials who may be sick and ill but would wish to participate. So we hope that will be good. Stay tuned. Hispanic Heritage Month. It started on the 15th of last month and is supposed to conclude by the 15th of this month. To that end, MJC has the Hispanic Education Conference this Saturday. And more than 700 students from surrounding high schools are expected to attend with some of the parents. It's a great event. If you're free, I'd invite you to come in and join us. Last but not least, I want to stand as I make this announcement. This week is Tutor Appreciation Week. To all of you who are in any way associated with tutoring, learning support, I salute you and I thank you. And when I look at my own journey, I wouldn't be here if they were not tutors who assisted me along the way. You help students to stay focused and stay the course. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor. 6.6, the travel report is for information only. Moving to the consent calendar, any members of the public have any questions or want to pull anything from the consent calendar? If not, 7.2 will be removed because it has to have some updating. And I will be recusing myself from 7.4. So with that, is there any trustee that wants to pull anything? Or, okay. I'll seek a motion to, first, I'll ask the student trustee if you have an opinion on approving the consent items.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the consent items? And do I have a second? So we got trustee Nicolau and trustee Aguilar. So all those in favor of moving forward on the consent items, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Mr. President, may I do what I normally do?
Do you have, yeah.
I do.
Appreciate that.
So I'd like to recognize Shirley Busby, 31 years, I can't even say that with a straight, 31 years of service to our community and to the students. Professor of Medical Assisting School of Health Professions, Modesto Junior College. 31 years, the changes that she has seen, the technology that has come on board, but more importantly, recognizing her work in the field of medicine, particularly as we all went through COVID. And I'm sure a lot of her students were out there in the community instrumental in getting ourselves, our college community, our family members through that pandemic. So I want to thank Shirley for her years of service and wish her well in retirement. Hector Duarte, 29 years of service, counselor, EOPS Student Services, MJC. We just had a wonderful presentation this evening on the remarkable work that EOPS and Student Services does for our students that really truly need our help in achieving their higher education goals. And I'm sure that Hector Duarte was instrumental in that. And I want to commend and applaud his efforts and wish him well in his retirement. Amy Duffy, 12 years of service, again, professor of medical assisting School of Health Professions, Modesto Junior College, the same as Shirley. Remarkable profession to be in, great service to the community, and I wish Amy all the best in retirement. Dale Hubbard, 13 years of service, custodian coordinator, facilities planning, maintenance, and transportation, central services, Columbia College. Again, I always like to recognize our custodians, professionals, especially all their efforts during the pandemic and keeping the colleges open. You know, when all of us were remote, they were on the ground doing the hard work and keeping the rooms clean and all of us safe. So thank you, Dale, for all your efforts and wish you well in retirement. I'm gonna take one out of order. Dale Phillips, 20 years of service, professor of computer science, School of Industry and Trades, MJC. Again, the technology changes that that individual has had to kept pace with and still provide high-quality education to our students who want to get into the field of computer science. And what a noble effort that is, such a great thing. We all rely on our computers. So thank you, Dale, for your 20 years of service. Wish you well in retirement. Now, Cecilia Huddleston, 28 years of service, interim dean, School of Business and Computing Industry and Trades and Public Safety, School of Business, Computing Industry and Trades and Public Safety, Modesto Junior College. You know, I met Cecilia when I first came on as a trustee, and I want to say there's probably not an individual in her years at the college that felt more about things to do, get involved in leadership, be involved, stay involved. She would show up at our finance committee meetings. So I not only want to applaud her for her years of service and education and in leadership, but also for her commitment to to other things in leadership within the district of Modesto Junior College, and I wish her well in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll excuse myself. While he's coughing.
Do we know for your own safety, what specific we're on the record of recusal is?
There's a bus company store tours.
We'll include that in the record. Thank you.
Meeting, oh, no. 7.4, consent agenda, district administrative services purchase order. The recommended action is the Board of Trustees approves the purchase orders issued from August 1st to the 31st, 2024.
And I'll second it. And on the record, poor President Richards has stepped out of the room and recused himself, which is appropriate, given what we said. So with that, I'll second him.
All right. On favor?
Aye.
Close? Now, meeting, meeting adjourned. All right, so. We just adjourned the meeting, so. Okay, moving on, we, item eight. Two of us are gonna go to the annual ACT Leadership Congress, trustee Bex and I. Dr. Tran has also got us to make another presentation, so we're excited about that. But we have to pick a voting delegate and I nominate trustee Bex, and I will serve as the alternate. Could I get a motion on that? So moved by trustee Garrett, could I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
So I had one job to do, and I forgot to give it to Gustavo, to his comments, so I completely failed. So I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
It's, it's I, yeah. It's okay. It's okay. Don't worry.
Okay, 8.2 is a discussion of the recordings of the board meetings, and I think we're gonna have that solved. I did notice one thing that if you actually go to YouTube and you put in a meeting, you'll find it there, but that's not enough. If someone, who's gonna talk about that, Chancellor, what we're gonna do?
The recordings of meetings?
Yeah, the request is to have them longer than 30, 30 days. I think we talked about maybe having them up for as long as a year.
So currently.
Change policy for that, or what do we have to do?
Let me get to the so, correct, the.
I think the will of the board is to put them up for a year, so maybe I'll make that motion. And do I have a, I don't want to make a motion. I'm the president. Could I get a motion that we?
Still moved.
And this, and a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Was, was it trustee Bex that did the second?
It was Jenny first? Okay.
I second.
Okay.
And then, just to clarify, my understanding is that like the October meeting, this meeting will be up until next October when the new October meeting goes up, correct?
Yes, and then after that, they will be deleted.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to 8.3. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees adopt YCCD Resolution Number 2425.07 in support of the Asian American Native American Pacific Islander-serving institutions week as attached to the October 9th, 2024 Agenda.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion? Trustee Garrett, second. Trustee Nicolau, all in favor? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, 8.4 is a YCCD Resolution 2425, request for the Board of Trustees to excuse the absence of trustee Hinton from the September 11th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting. Gustavo?
Aye.
Motion? Trustee Davis, second. Trustee Garrett, all in favor? Okay, 8.5, same motion for trustee Aguilar, who was also ill for a meeting. Gustavo?
Aye.
Do I have, do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah.
If you would take the motion first and then ask for the students' vote, would be the order.
Okay, we did that.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, nine, we're gonna ask for board comments studying with the student trustee. Anything you'd like to talk about?
Just some comments on today. I just want to say it was, it was an amazing presentation scene about, you know, the impact on special programs, me being a student myself. You know, getting these services that go over and above and beyond, and also being a student worker there and working on part of, like, in part of outreach. You know, we individually call these students who are potentially eligible for EOPNS as a student worker. We do outreach tables. We gave out hot dogs on EOPS's anniversary. And I just came back from San Diego from EOPS Association. And I just came back from San Diego, from EOPS Association. We were out there. And I got to learn about what other community colleges down there, what they do to help their students. And one of the cool things that I really liked to hear from LA's Community College, and I had shared it with President Brian Sanders about was they were able to help. And it's called RFS. It's a federally funded program where they were able to help a student who came in to create an ed plan to, this student had came in with their personal belongings and this was their life. This was everything. This was them. And they came in for an ed plan. The counselor said, let's scratch that. Let's get a roof over your head. Within seventy-two hours, they were able to provide the student with housing. And I thought that was really incredible. And, you know, I want to look more into and see what we can do. You know, not just MJC, but I, I see, you know, Columbia has amazing housing here. We got to get a little tour last time. But I want to see what we could do at more of Modesto Junior College. Also being used, I used to be an ambassador for the CCC Foundation. So we would tackle students' needs and their, what it is that, you know, how to tackle housing, food insecurities and how to go about that. So that's something that I want to work on. Touching bases, I know that they had talked about it, our MJC's ASMJC and Chancellor Young and President Brian Sanders. We have our forty, forty-first Hispanic Education Conference. I used to, this last fortieth Hispanic Education Conference, that's where I met Chancellor Young. I got to introduce him on the stage as the emcee. It's a really great event, you know. The, it's a really great event because it enriches, it empowers, and it educates our students and our people from the community. And I, and I always volunteered and I will continue to volunteer even upcoming this graduation, when I graduate this spring. I, I feel like this event is a great event and I would love to see you guys there. I seen Leslie out at a couple of MJC events. And then also a special thank you to Dr. Andrea Wilson and Dr. Sarah Schrader, as well as Trevor, for working hard to bring in transportation service back. And not only that, but I just want to say that I work closely with those lower income, first gen foster youth students and the fact that they were able to bring it back so fast. And these, you know, hearing from students directly as a student, it was a great relief. And, and I'm glad that they, they have something in place for the upcoming semester. And with that being said, that's my comments.
Trustee Garrett?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Trustee Nicolau?
I have a future item, but no comments.
Fine. Trustee Bags?
I just want to thank Samantha and everyone else who got together the dash, the data dashboard for us and did the report on retention and attrition, et cetera. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Trustee Davis?
You have a comment and feature item next.
I just want to really commend our colleges for being the early adopter on the accreditation new standards and a new format. But I noticed from the visiting committee that came, well, they're, they're all practitioners. And it was like, in a way, you were schooling them. And I'm sure that was appreciated because they say, okay, now it makes more sense to us as we see how it's laid out, how you approached it and all. And I, and I think that appreciation will also be reflected in your term, in your accreditation. So brilliant way to go and do it. And, and well done. So just wanted to make that comment. Thank you. Trustee Agler?
I just want to say that I admire this young man and hopefully all the student trustees that we have on, they could be involved with Gustavo. Very proud of you. You've done a very good job.
I also, that's been said a lot tonight, but it can't be said more. Chancellor Young, President Sanders, President Tran, all, I think, former President Redwing, everyone that worked on this accreditation, fantastic job. And I, I think, as I recall, we were one of the first to go through the new process and for us to get through that, great job. President Sanders, but Vice President, I'm forgetting, our student affairs person. Dr. Wilson, I'm sorry. It happens. You get, you know what happened. Trevor, thank you for putting the buses back. You know, I, I, I think everybody tried to do the right thing. I think, you know, we, we made a mistake, but you learn from mistakes. What you all pulled off, great job. Appreciate that. Okay, now we'll turn to future agenda items. Any?
No.
Trustee?
Yes. When the dairy judging team gets back from Scotland, and if they're not at a future team, I would love, I would love for that team, the students, to present to us on what dairy judging, how that translates to life and what they've learned, because I suspect not many of you have judged dairy in the past. And I think that would be a really good life lesson for us of how these lessons that are provided to them through the MJC Ag Department help to translate to who they've become as individuals and how that will serve them in their career moving forward.
You know, in, in college athletics, when you win, you get one of these rings. Maybe we should get them rings. And I think President Tran, you had some experience with that, with the basketball team. So maybe we get some, some national championship rings. Trustee Davis?
Yeah, for the tricommittee, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's one action or two that I'm requesting. So I'll let you guys just work that out. But having the request for proposal, have a vote, have an action. And, and, and if that's voted in favor of, then we know the direction. If it's voted, if it doesn't pass, my question is, would that mean there'd be another vote to start the process in-house or would it automatically start in-house? So if you guys could work through that, I think two votes would be fine. One, if so is much, so that one, you know, implies the other that works as well.
Sounds good.
All right.
Trustee Bags?
Oh, for future items?
No, the only thing I'd say without process, we also, I, I don't know if you have a committee or the group as a whole, but we need to look at the brochure with, with HR that goes out. Cause I was on the committee last time, so I remember going through all of this.
Everyone will be concerned.
Yeah.
Trustee Aguilar? With that, where do you mind? Thank you.